Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular scheduled meeting of the Beaver Creek City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Bales.
Here.
Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Duer.
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here. And if you would, please stand with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if we can take just a moment to pause on everything going on around the world today, mostly in Ukraine, but here at home, we still have issues that we're facing here on a daily basis. So just take a pause for a moment here, if you don't mind. Thank you. All right, we have an agenda before us. Any changes? I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes, we have minutes. We'll start with the February 22nd work session minutes. Any changes?
Move to approve?
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the February 22nd work session minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Aye, will. Next are the minutes from the February 28th regular scheduled meeting. Any comments?
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for the February 28th regular council meeting minutes as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? One. Thank you. Thank you for taking over while I was gone. All right, ordinancees, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 22-07.
Ordinance 22-07, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing old Section 31.16 legislation of the city of Beaver Creek codified ordinances and enacting a new section 31.16 legislation.
All right. Mr. McHugh, I think you're gonna give a summary on this one, please.
Yes, Mayor, Council. This one, this particular ordinance is to update our codified ordinance section on number of readings of the code to correspond with the charter change that council approved to put on ballot and the citizens approved sometime, and this section was not changed. So we've been operating under the charter, so the intent of this was to just bring it in line with the charter. That was the change in it.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from council? All right, this was, this ordinance was sponsored by Councilmember Schwartz. Do I have a motion?
Thank you. Move to approve ordinance 22-07.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-07. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks. Next is resolution 21-11.
Resolution 22-11, a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interests owned by Jeffrey S. Trapp and Denise L. Trapp, trustees of the Trapp family living trust, with interest by others for the Shakertown Road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Oops. Thank you, we'll go back to it. Can we back up just a second? I just noticed and was pointed out to me by the Vice Mayor that we needed a roll call on that last ordinance. Is that correct, Steve? Do you think we needed a roll call?
No.
We do not?
No.
Okay. All right, thank you. Now, please.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. One of our capital projects planned for this year is an improvement along Shakertown Road. Generally, the project begins at North Fairfield and goes to Carthage. The project, it'll reconstruct the roadway, curb gutter, storm sewer, side path along the north side and sidewalk along the south side of the road. In order to construct the project, we had to acquire additional property rights from 13 properties. On the good side, we've been able to negotiate deals with 12 of the 13, but there is one property unfortunately we weren't able to reach an agreement with, and that was the Trapp property. The property is located at 3334 Shakertown Road. It's immediately to the east of the interest to Valley Mead along the north side of the roadway. The proposed acquisition, there's a, I should mention, there's a existing highway easement. It looks like a rather large area, the yellow, but the existing highway easement is kind of shown there, and in that blue line is kind of hard to see. So the city essentially controls from the blue line to the roadway already. The additional, what we're purchasing, is about 15 feet beyond that line. Additional, in addition to the permanent right of way in yellow, there's also going to be a temporary grading easement in red, and the purpose of that is to modify his driveways to meet the new grade of the roadway, so he's a smooth transition from his parking area back to the street. The appraised fair market value of the property is $7,275. And what we're asking for today is permission to go ahead and appropriate both of these properties. There's two pieces of legislation we need to pass to do that. First is the resolution before you now, the second is the ordinance that you'll hear from next. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have any?
Any feedback from the Trapp family that we've heard recently?
He really hasn't communicated with us. There was a letter he sent to me early on, which I responded to. Aside from that, he hasn't communicated with the engineering office, or we have a consultant also that's helping us out, so.
Thank you.
Will he still have a pretty good parking area back there when it's completed?
He will. You can see the yellow line, the side path is gonna be, you can see on the other side of Valley Mead there where the side path is. We're gonna project that side path where it's gonna line up crossing the intersection, and then it's gonna bow closer to the roadway. So you can see where that yellow line is, it's not really into his parking, it's more or less his driveway area.
All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution 22-11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 22-11. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Now, the connecting ordinance is next, which is 22-09.
Ordinance 22-09, to appropriate certain real property interests owned by Jeffrey S. Trapp and Denise L. Trapp, trustees of the Trapp family living trust for the Shakertown Road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Jeff, anything you want to add on this one, other than it's just the ordinance?
Yes, sir, it's just the accompanying ordinance, and it goes with the resolution you guys just approved.
All right, any questions on this? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Oops, sorry. This is an ordinance. Is there anyone present this evening that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on. Now, accept a motion, please.
Motion to move ordinance 22-09 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-09, to move it on to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Next is resolution 22-12.
Resolution 22-12, a resolution to declare the necessity and intent to acquire certain parcels or real estate and other property interests owned by Christopher Joseph Harris, with interest by others for the Shakertown Road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you.
Yes. Yeah, and like I said, we were able to reach agreements with 12 of the 13. We did reach an agreement with Mr. Harris. The hangup was, his mortgage was fairly new, and his mortgage company was reluctant to grant a release for the land the city would buy for right-of-way purposes. So in order for us to get clean title to the property we'd be purchasing, we have to go through the appropriations process. And Mr. Harris has said he's willing to cooperate any way he can during that process, so long as we keep to the original agreement, which we already verbally agreed to.
Questions? Motion.
I actually do have a question.
Go.
I'm looking at that temporary right-of-way, it looks like it's almost going right up to his front door.
Yes, it does, yeah.
Yeah, and maybe inside.
Yeah, and again, the area will shift just a bit, but yeah, we are going all the way up to his garage with the driveway, because there's such a short distance between, the walk is gonna be directly in front of where the yellow line is shown there. So we don't have a lot of horizontal distance to take out the difference in grade, so to make his driveway as flat as possible, we have to come all the way back to his garage door, basically.
Do all the trees come down there?
The trees within the red area will.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Doesn't look like there's much there. Anyone else? Motion.
Motion to approve resolution 22-12.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution 22-12. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance 22-10.
Ordinance 22-10, to appropriate certain real property interests owned by Christopher Joseph Harris for the Shakertown Road widening project in the city of Beaver Creek, Ohio.
Thank you. Anything to add?
Yeah.
All right, this is the accompanying ordinance to follow that resolution. Any further discussion?
I move ordinance 22-10.
Second.
Before I call for the vote, I'll ask again, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will close public input. I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-10, moving it to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next, ordinance 22-11.
Ordinance 22-11, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council repealing current Chapter 35, Section 37, fire insurance trust fund of the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek and enacting a new Chapter 35, Section 37, fire insurance trust fund to the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The ordinance you have before you is a repeal and replacement of an existing ordinance. And basically, what that does is if a house were to burn down or a commercial structure were to burn down, we get a, the city would hold on to deposit a portion of their insurance proceeds to ensure that they either remove the rubble from the building if they're not gonna rebuild, or they rebuild it and get it undersight, or under roof, so that it's not a half a building sitting out there for years. Sometimes the project may run out of money, and then they'll just sit there half vacant. But we hold on to that percentage so that we can ensure that that gets done in a timely manner. Again, this ordinance was last changed in 1983, and so what we're proposing to do here is bring the language up to ORC language, so that we get the dollar right, the dollar amounts right. It was $2,000 for every 10,000, now it's three for every 15, I believe are some numbers.
One to two?
One for every 10, and now it's, now it's, it was 1,000 for every 20, and now it is two for every 15, so it's a big difference when you're talking about a house, a $400,000 house, you would get a much bigger deposit than what we have currently. So this gets us up to market rates, and so we're proposing to change the language as provided.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 22-11 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-11, moving it to the second reading. Again, before I call for a vote, it's been a while since I've been here. I won't say that not an empty room, but it, but is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on. So I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-11, moving it to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next is ordinance 22-12.
Ordinance 22-12, an ordinance by Beaver Creek City Council hereby reaffirming the ban on possessing, selling, or discharging fireworks in the city of Beaver Creek as set forth in Section 93.09 of the codified ordinances of the city of Beaver Creek pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 3743 dot four five.
Thank you. Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As we know, the governor of Ohio recently signed House Bill 172 amending Ohio Revised Code 374345 that goes into effect July 1st, 2022, allowing any person authorized to possess consumer-grade fireworks to discharge, ignite, or explode fireworks on their property, or if permitted, on another person's property on certain designated days of the year. House Bill 172 also provides that pursuant to Home Rule authority, the city may choose to restrict the days and times that a person may discharge consumer-grade fireworks, or may impose a complete ban on the use of consumer-grade fireworks. The possession, sell, or discharge of fireworks poses a significant danger to the public and may cause serious injuries, as well as significant property damage, especially in residential and business areas. Staff is recommending the adoption of this ordinance that continues the ban on the possession, sell, or discharge of fireworks as set forth in Section 9309 of the codified ordinances pursuant to Ohio Revised Code 374345.
Thank you. Questions? I have one, chief, and that is, do you know what our neighbors are doing? I mean, is Kettering and Fairborn, I mean, if they're not doing something similar, we're gonna be hearing it anyway. I mean, I'm just curious if you knew.
When we had our work session at the time, we were the first ones to kind of come to this, a resolution, come to this point. The city of Dayton has banned them, already did it back earlier this year, late last year, and I believe in talking to my colleagues, we were the first to take action on this. So I have not checked on it since the work session, but at that time, all of the folks in the area were still pondering what to do.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I think just a comment, Mayor, and to say we had a work session, we ran through a number of devil's advocates type positions, just see, well, what can we do here, but to solicit input from the public if there's a strong opinion on what to do, but I think we have a great guidance from the chief to follow, and so that's where, that's our position, my position, and so, but I welcome discussion from the public, if there's something we're missing, or a particular opinion you have.
Yeah, I thought this might have gotten a few people to the meeting, but it...
Well, one of the major concerns that I expressed at the council meeting, Your Honor, to the members of the council, was yes, they talk about what they call consumer-grade fireworks. The great concern is two things, the density of properties in Beaver Creek, the idea that you could have a person on private property, you could have two or three in a block that might fire off fireworks, catch somebody's roof on fire. Why? Because the possibility that they wouldn't be using consumer-grade, Your Honor, they would be using the high-test stuff. The argument back, well, you can't buy that stuff. They'll get it, and they'll put it on their property, and somebody's gonna get hurt. And it seemed to me very, very dangerous to be having this kind of a circumstance. It's not talking about having it in some big public park once a day. Here, you got over 20 different days where people can fire off fireworks and create mayhem in neighborhoods, in my opinion.
Anyone else? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Uh...
There we go again.
Ordinance, Your Honor...
Is there anyone present this evening?
Oh, anyone present?
That would like to address council on this ordinance?
Not this week.
I guess the hard part is I know the answer. Seeing none, we will, we will move on. Now, I'll accept an ordinance, or a motion, please.
Mayor, I move, I motion to move ordinance 22-12 to the second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 22-12, moving it to the second reading. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks, chief. Next is ordinance 22-13. Mr. Casera.
Ordinance 22-13, to approve supplemental appropriations and certify additional revenue for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2020, and ending December 31, 2022, and to amend ordinances 22-08, 22-03, 22-01, and 21-26.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of city council. This is my biweekly appropriation recap here, so bear with me. I did give you an updated version of this. One of the funds was actually incorrect, so we corrected that before we passed the legislation, and I'll go over these real briefly. The FEMA fund, we received what we believe to be our final reimbursement. I said that last time I was here, and some additional money came in. This actually was the amount for the administration. They gave you up to 5% of the total cost of the event for administration, putting it all together, auditing it, and submitting it, that type of thing. And what we got last time was the federal portion. I didn't really think we were gonna get a state portion, which is a 12 and 1/2% of that, and they did send us a check for that, so we have to appropriate, certify the revenue coming in, the 9,045, and then that's all going into the general fund. It was basically my time pulling all that together for the last couple of years. So I believe that will be the final reimbursement from that event from 2019. The next item is the police department received grant funding last year from the Attorney General as part of the Ohio Law Enforcement Body Armor Grant to get reinforced vests, body armor, and accessories. As they were doing their process, they realized that they didn't appropriate all the money that they had available for the grant. They contacted us and said that they have an additional $25,000 for us to utilize. So what we're doing is certifying that amount of money, and then, again, there's a 25% match, so we're appropriating the entire amount to buy the accessories and the body armor, and then taking in the 1,8750, which is the grant portion, the 75% of that total amount, so that was good news. Again, we already have a vest grant, if you recall that, that's normally in our budget every year, and that's a 50% reimbursement. So again, we're gonna buy them with this money first, and then, so again, we'll end up getting more vests earlier than we had originally planned in the budget. The next item is, now we're venturing into ARPA. You recall the ARPA money, that was gonna be distributed in two different tranches, they like to call them, and we received ours first one in May, we were gonna get another one May or June this year. But what they had set up in the beginning was a process where any townships, municipalities that didn't claim their money, didn't apply to get reimbursed for the ARPA funds, that would go back into a pool and it'd be redistributed to all the people that did participate and activate their draw from the ARPA funds. So again, we got notified that our share of that was $9,982, so we need to certify that revenue, and then we're gonna just throw that into the Stormwater project budget. We knew that that was an amount there, that we were probably under budgeted anyway, so that money will help out in getting some more of that project completed. The last thing with the ARPA funds is that we, obviously, we've, you've seen all the results of the additional upgraded communication equipment that we bought for the council chambers, the microphones, everything like that. When we did that, we utilized MVC's help, the Miami Valley Communication Council, they actually came in and helped us decipher what equipment we needed to do that, to help us install it, that type of thing. We originally had that in the budget for a dollar amount, we didn't encumber it, because we thought we were gonna spend it in 2021. It turned out that they didn't send us the bill till just a couple of weeks ago. So again, that money just kind of went into the fund balance, so we need to pull that out and say, okay, we need to appropriate this amount of money in the 2022 budget. So again, that's what you're saying there, for the $2,560 is to allocate that to the ARPA project that we had already funded. And again, just to let you know, that that project came in below the original budget anyway, even with this additional cost, so I just wanted to make that, mention of that. And then the last thing I have is the West Banco property. When we demolished that, we put out a bid project of what we thought was there. You never really know in those type of projects. Well, of course, they found asbestos, a little bit asbestos in the tile, and some various small places, but again, that has to be mitigated, and with that, there was also more heavily reinforced and deeper concrete than we thought in a couple of sections of the bank. And so our contractor had to do additional work that was above and beyond the original scope, so we just needed to finalize that project and appropriate that amount of money for, to finalize that, the final step of getting that demolished and bringing it down to where it is right now. So again, that money, what we've had in the past in the budget was that all the money for those parcels and the demolition was split between the general fund and the police fund, 65 in the police and 35 based on square footage, that type of thing. And so we just needed to appropriate that amount of money for that extra $8,250 in those two funds. And then the last item is the, again, when we go to close on these properties, everybody gets prorated there in property taxes. I kind of thought that that was all gonna be done last year, it kind of carried over. So again, when we get that and they settle that, that's fine, but the bill actually comes to us, since we're the owner at the end of the year, and we have to pay that bill, and I, quite frankly, just didn't budget for that. Again, I thought we were gonna have it all completed by the end of the year. So we just need to appropriate that amount of money to pay those property taxes, and again, just to let everybody know that once we've done that, we pay the portion that we were supposed to pay and the portion that was part of the closing, then we submit it to the county auditor to say, that's our land now, it's tax-exempt from here on going in the future. So just to let you know that that process did happen, so. And I think that's it.
All right. Any questions?
Yes, is this the, in your mind, the, or you view, the last of the ARPA funds that are likely to come our way?
Well, we still have one more, the second distribution.
Right.
So that'll be coming probably May or June, is what I understand, but, and again, how they're going to do another reallocation of that at the end, we may end up getting some additional funds or something like that, because as people start to report what they're using the ARPA funds for, again, there might be some places that return it or something like that. So again, you never know, but I wouldn't think it'd be anything significant.
Thank you.
I have one other question about that. The way you read that redistribution was the, was it $9,000 some odd dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Was that just for the first tranche, or was that total then for both?
That's for the first. So again, what they had, they set up a process that said, you know, you have to apply for it, and for those that didn't apply, they kept extending that timeframe to say, please apply, please apply. They were trying to get the money out to all the various places, but they had it cut off finally and said, after that, whatever the pool is, however we distributed the original money, that's what we're gonna do with this additional money that was never appropriated to the townships and other places that could have, could have been available to them.
Right, so I guess my question is, do we expect about the same amount after we receive the second tranche? Or is that, is that 9,900, was that kind of figured in?
It's hard to say. They didn't really come up with a process after this process. So again, we have to start reporting at the end of March to let them know how we're spending our money, what we're using it for, and what we're budgeting for, that type of thing. So I was always thinking that eventually, some folks may have taken what they needed, but they may not use it, and I think that process, you're right, it'll be the same thing, is they'll go back and say, well, we have a million dollars that nobody utilized, or something like that, and we'll distribute that back to the communities that applied and followed the rules and accepted the money in the past. So it's hard to say, I mean, you just don't know, but it'd probably be like the tornado funds, we'll probably get, you know, two... We'll probably get, you know, two thousand and twenty-five, we may get another distribution of two thousand dollars or something like that, so it's hard to say. But their process is there that says that they will do that based on whatever they have, so... And but there's no timeframe on it.
Anyone else?
I just have one question. I'm noticing in the revenue fund, it's to one oh one, we're nine thousand forty-five, and the two-fifty is nine thousand forty-five. It's just confusing that they're both the same amount.
Well, where's that?
It's under the, where you got it listed out, increased revenue, and then...
Line items, general fund.
Oh, the general fund and the... Again, because what happens is that, you know, per the guidelines of the state of Ohio, it has to flow through the two-fifty fund, so the money actually has to come into the two-fifty. And then we appropriate it because we're going to send it back to the fund that generated the cost. So again, you'll see appropriation and then revenue coming into the general fund. That's why that's the same. It gets a little confusing, but when they, again, even when they set up, like the opioid, we just received the information about that, we have to set up a separate fund. And again, everything has to flow through that fund. And then how you distribute it back to where it's being utilized is up to the state, depending on what kind of federal funds they are. So, good question, though.
Anyone else? Now, before we vote on this ordinance or even get public input, I would like to have a motion to amend ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen because it is different now than it was.
Right.
So I need to amend to make it current with today's information. A motion to that effect.
Move to amend, Your Honor.
Second.
Any questions? I have a motion and a second to amend ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen based on the information presented this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This is the... This is an ordinance, so is there anyone present this evening that would like to address counsel on this ordinance? Seeing none, we will move on. Do I have a motion?
Mayor, I move to approve ordinance twenty-two dash thirteen as amended.
Second.
As a single reading.
Right, as a single reading, yeah.
Vice Mayor, first we ask.
Yes.
Councilmember Durin.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Mayor Stein.
Yes, thank you. All right, next is resolution twenty-two dash ten.
Resolution twenty-two dash ten, a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute collective bargaining agreements with the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge Number One Sixty, covering sergeants, patrol officers, and civilian employees.
Good evening again. Well, this has been a little bit of time coming. We started back in November, a little bit of break for the holidays, a little bit of issue with COVID. However, the contract between the city of Beaver Creek and members of the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge One Sixty expired back on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one. And formal negotiations occurred between the two parties culminating with an agreed-upon settlement that was ratified by the members of the three collective bargaining units within the FOP. And these agreements are for a three-year period, beginning January first, two thousand twenty-two, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. And some of the highlights that I put on the agenda item here are the wages that are retroactive back to January first of two thousand twenty-two is a two and three-quarter increase in two thousand twenty-two, and a three percent increase both in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four. We increased the night shift differential from seventy cents an hour to seventy-five cents an hour, and the weekend shift differential from fifty cents to fifty-five cents an hour. Another item that is now similar in all the contracts within the city, which is something we were working toward, employee health insurance contribution. The language is capping any additional increase in nineteen percent during the term of this agreement. The new language, excuse me, which is now similar in all the contracts, all full-time members hired on or after January first of two thousand twenty-two shall be offered the HDHP, which with the HSA is their health insurance plan, with an option to buy up to the PPO plan, with the member paying the entire cost difference between the HDHP with HSA to the PPO. And in order for us to keep up with the efficiency and the effectiveness of the... Our daily operations, we did negotiate several other items that were non-monetary, such as personal days. Now, the personal days align with city policy, so basically that is on alignment now. We also worked on the conversion of sick leave. It's now to where you have to have a minimum of sixty-six days left versus thirty-three. We worked on shift preference to where we have a little bit more efficiency in where we can put our specialized skills, our motor officer, our K-9, evidence technicians, and so forth. And we cleaned up some old language from remit leave and comp time use. So we did do quite a bit of negotiating on some of the non-monetary things as well, however, going to take a little bit of time with the breaks and the holidays and a little bit of illness there. So staff is recommending this approval of this resolution, which I believe would allow the city manager to sign these agreements with us.
Thanks, Chief. Questions? Please.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank Chief and the negotiating team for a good job. And I do appreciate the FOP as well. It was a difficult time there with the holidays, and then COVID played its role with the team for which it was a slight delay because of that. But I appreciate the FOP continuing to negotiate and coming to the table as well. And we just appreciate we were able to get this done without too much delay. So I appreciate their cooperation and always look forward to working with them. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you.
Mayor, I move to approve resolution twenty-two dash ten.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-two dash ten. Any further comment? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is resolution twenty-two dash thirteen.
Resolution twenty-two dash thirteen, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the city to operate and maintain traffic signals owned by the Ohio Department of Transportation at the I-675 ramps.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. For the past many years, we've had an existing agreement with the Ohio Department of Transportation for the city to do maintenance and to do the timing on all the traffic signals at the I-675 ramps. There's a total of seven signals. The real benefit of that is we have timing plans along our major corridors, and it allows us to tie in those ODOT signals to our overall corridor timing plans to get more efficient vehicle progression down Indian Ripple, North Fairfield, Grinch Hall Road. I've compared the existing agreement to the proposed agreement. Really, it's pretty much identical, except there's been some advances in technology where they include that in this agreement. For example, back in the nineties, we didn't have battery backups. Now, all the signals at the ramps all have battery backups, they included language for that. We now have fiber connections to all those signals. And again, that's something new that's happened since the nineties, and they include that in the agreement, stuff like that. I should also mention, under the current agreement, we get two thousand dollars per year per signal to pay for the power and maintenance inspections, things of that nature. With the new agreement, they're increasing that amount to three thousand dollars per signal. And with that, if you happen to answer any questions.
All right, speak up. Councilmember Durin, you look like you have a question.
I'm just weighing it out, because I'm thinking of Colonel Glenn, it's outside of our jurisdiction, but I'm just thinking about the coordination of lights. Is that in place? It doesn't make a big difference, in my view, but I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, absolutely. The city of Fairborn, I believe, runs a little mini coordinated system of their own out there. It involves a couple of intersections. There's no connection between our system and their system. There was a number of years ago, there used to be a copper interconnect line that connected the Fairborn system to the Beaver Creek system, but that was, has a long since been abandoned, so...
Sure.
But yeah, I'd be happy to speak with Fairborn, see if they have an interest in... There would be a capital expenditure to physically connect the two systems together. I could speak with them, see if they'd be interested in sharing that cost or not.
I don't think it backs up enough, I was just curious, so, thank you.
I have it, thank you, turned off. How on earth is it doing that? I mean, it's off, totally. Oh, well. Sorry about that, sir. Any other questions? All right, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve resolution twenty-two dash thirteen.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve resolution twenty-two dash thirteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Decision items. We have a liquor license.
Okay, good evening once again. We do have a liquor, a new liquor permit request from El Toro. They are moving from their location on Indian Ripple over to the old Mimi's location, which is at forty-four oh two Walnut Street in the green. The Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, sent us the notification of this request regarding their new D-five liquor permit for El Toro. Again, moving to forty-four oh two Walnut Street. The record checks required by the Ohio Department of Commerce, Division of Liquor Control, were all conducted on the applicant and the shareholders, and there were no issues. And staff is recommending this application request move forward.
Motion to accept without comment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries, thanks, Chief. All right, council time. How about we start with Councilmember Curran?
Wow, okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Number one, I attended the resident mayor's first Thursday event. There was a number of us there. And Mr. Ron Miller explained to us the whole program, Your Honor, at that particular event. And it was very informative, telling us what role they play in helping the Air Force, and it was very exciting. Number two, Carol Graff, former mayor and community person, was voted Dangerous Dame by the League of Women Voters. And Carol, of course, has been involved in a lot of things. Dangerous Dame, it doesn't... What it refers to is activity in voting. If you go back to the League of Women Voters, early on, they've been activists in getting the right to vote for women, and they've used this title over the years to recognize community leaders. And our own Carol Graff was one of them, got recognized here just last week. Next, attended the Power of the Pen, sponsored by the VFW, recognizing students and law enforcement firefighter of the year people, and it was very exciting. The mayor was there, Vice Mayor was there, and it was an exciting evening. Also, a special recognition of the outstanding work that our own council member, Councilmember Durin and Dr. Smith, gave an outstanding program on Ukraine. It was just excellent, tremendous response from the people that were there, asking questions. And I just wanted to salute Councilmember Durin, outstanding job, and pass it on to also Dr. Smith at the Cedarville University. And also, lastly, I'd like to encourage citizens to go to the mayor. The mayor's going to be making some presentations here, beginning this week, and next week, and the week after, and I'd like to encourage the citizens to come to those meetings and get informed on our city income tax issue, which we all know is on the ballot in May. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember Schwartz.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few things. So this week, I, well, last week, I guess, I was very lucky to attend an elected official training with Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Bales, and it was very informative. It was a great day-long event, learned some things, and definitely brought some things back, so excited to do that. Additionally, I also wanted to thank Dr. Durin for his presentation at the Rotary. It was an outstanding presentation, and also thank you to Dr. Smith. As many of you may know, I am an attorney with the Research Lab, and so occasionally, they will let me outside of the base and allow me to engage in some STEM activities. And so I was very lucky to have judged one of our science fairs at Fairbrook Elementary two weeks ago. And let me tell you, some of the things that those students were doing was just astounding. Now, the one that was of particular interest to me was which coffee mug will keep your hot cocoa hottest the longest? And there was about eh, ten different coffee mugs that had ranged in different degrees, and so it was very important for me as a coffee drinker, but important to the student as a hot chocolate drinker. And so that was interesting. There were also several other things, measuring pH and the way that your body metabolizes different foods, and so just astounding, great work by our kids, so it was fun to do that. The other thing I wanted to mention is the Chamber Facebook page. I don't know if any of you are active on there, but even if you're not a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I would encourage you to go and like their page. Every week, they do this fun week welcome, and they talk about all the events that are going on and the businesses in our community. And then at the end of the week, they also do kind of a wrap-up. So the things that you didn't get to visit, or maybe the events that you didn't get to attend, you can kind of see what went on there. And so I encourage everyone to like their Facebook page. And last, certainly not least, I wanted to give a shout-out and a thanks to the police department for escorting our boys bowling team to state. The boys were able to place in the top sixteenth of D-one teams. And so congratulations to them, and thank you to the police department. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Adams.
Well, a couple of things already been said, but the Resident Sciences, it's amazing technology those guys are working on out there. And to have that here in Beaver Creek is a real, I think, feather in our hat, even though we're not doing it, I think it's having that here is a... I was thoroughly impressed with that machine that they're building to check the radio, radar signature of airplanes. And you can tell just how big a radar signature they have, so they can keep those out of sight, out of mind, I guess. I attended the Fourth of July committee meeting. Excuse me. We're on track for another great celebration this year. We've already got fifteen food trucks scheduled, they're going to try to get five more. They are still looking for a grand marshal, so if anyone out there wants to nominate someone, please do so. I also attended the elected officials training. It was a good training with Councilman Bales and Councilwoman Schwartz. It was a great day to be there, listen to different local mayors, city managers, and attorneys. Gave us some good information, and it was great to spend the day with those two. By the way, it was a well-good day. Tended the Beaver Creek Youth Development Committee meeting recently, and the BYC is starting to wrap up for this year. They're going to be electing officers for next year, this coming month. And I believe that they're going to be coming before council sometime towards the end of May to recognize the seniors. And I highly recommend that if you've got a child in the sixth grade to twelfth grade, get them involved in that. It's a good leadership training program, and just gives them a lot of insight into how things work within the city and the business world, and teaches them how they're going to survive a little bit when they get into the real world. And I'd also like to thank Dr. Durin here, Councilman Durin and Dr. Smith, for the presentation that they gave at Rotary. It was about Ukraine and Russia, and the history that they provided was really amazing. I can't thank you enough, I wish we could have lasted another couple of hours. It was... Then the middle school robotics teams had their state competition this past weekend, and I think seven of our local teams have qualified to go to Dallas, Texas for the national competition coming up later this year. I don't know exactly when that is, but I was able to attend their competition they had out here, and these kids are, for middle schoolers, are amazing what they can do with the electronics and the programming and that. So if you get a chance to be a part of that, either the robotics team or the, I think, the Lego League, different ones like that, take advantage of it, see what these kids are doing. And with that, that's all I have, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Durin.
Thank you, Mayor. Like a number of council members, I had a chance to attend the mayor's first Thursday at Resident Sciences, and just a wonderful facility expansion. Get very excited about improvements and upgrades in Beaver Creek, and so congratulations to them, and thanks for opening the facility for us to see. Like to thank my fellow council members for their very kind words on my presentation. I'll pass those along to my colleague, Dr. Mark Caleb Smith. In particular, I'd like to thank Councilmember Bales, Mike Swick, and Mark Weinstein for the invitation. Really thankful, and wonderful questions, and I had a chance to make a similar address... Really thankful, and wonderful questions, and I had a chance to make a similar address at University Baptist Church on the sixth. Thankful for the invitation from Pastor Jason Wing on that, and just to pray for the people of Ukraine. There are many brave people in Russia that have also gone out to protest against their own government, significant personal costs, and it's a brutal conflict, and to pray for its swift end. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir, and thank you again for that presentation that I've been, my mind has been working trying to decide where are other places where you could, and your colleagues could do a presentation like that, because more people need to hear what you two had to say, so thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bales.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think I'll start off by thanking El Toro for moving to Mimi's at the Green, as we just passed that motion for their liquor license, and I happened to enjoy that restaurant over the weekend and run into fellow councilmember Curran there with his wife, and so, anyway, it's delicious, I enjoy it, and look forward to visiting that location at the Green. Let's see, I top, it was mentioned about the elected official and administrator training that we attended. I thought it was very beneficial for both elected officials and administrators who were present. We learned about sunshine laws and ethics, as well as municipal finance, which I thought was really great, some strategic communication examples, and then a lot of issues before, like the Ohio Municipal League, and things that are facing our state legislature, so it was very valuable. Thank you, Dr. Doer, for your speech. That was fantastic, and I echo everyone else's comments there. And also, congratulations to the middle school vex robotics team. There were indeed seven teams that qualified for the World Championships this May. Wanted to let everybody know that I will be attending the Little Miami Watershed Network Meeting on April 1st. That was one of the committees that I had signed up for, and they reached out to me, and we've got a meeting set up. Kind of a random comment, last night, I was on the phone with my ninety-six-year-old grandmother, she lives in Beaver Creek, and she called me specifically to tell me that she loved the InTouch. That's what she wanted me to hear. She said it was, this issue of the InTouch was very impactful, and she appreciated all of the information that was given, and I think at the last council meeting, I brought a copy with me and urged everyone to read it, and so she must have taken that to heart. But there is a lot of great information in there, so thank you to everyone who puts that newsletter together, and always nice to hear from my grandmother, and especially when she wants to talk about how great we're doing as a city, so that's awesome. Finally, next week, I will be missing our work session, I will be on spring break with my kids, so I would appreciate an excused absence, but I wish you all the best with the joint school board meeting, so that's all I've got.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. So, I know Councilmember Curran mentioned, but I was able to go to the VFW annual awards with the mayor. It was great to see our youth and first responders and teachers recognized at this event, it was really well done. I did attend the MVRPC meeting, and I was reappointed to the executive board, so I'll be serving on the executive board for the next two years for MVRPC. The membership dues that we discussed will be increasing, will actually not increase until next year, so this year's dues are going to remain on the 2010 census, and then next year, they'll increase to 2020. And to talk about some of the great things that we do get from MVRPC, on the March 3rd meeting, we were approved for a number of improvement programs in Beaver Creek, so we were able to get funding for the Colonel Glenn Highway Resurfacing, the Indian Ripple Road Widening Project, the North Fairfield Road Widening Project, from North Fairfield Road to Fairwood Drive to Kemp Road. And then we were also able to receive some additional funding through the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act. So, through that, we were able to get funding for the Grange Hall Road Resurfacing, and then through the transportation alternatives, we were able to get the Shakertown Road Side Path Project funded as well. So, not all of these were fully funded through MVRPC, but we did get a substantial amount of money in the six, seven figures per project, which is really great to see, but otherwise, we had a really good meeting at MVRPC, and I think I have the honor of announcing our anniversaries this month.
All right.
So, I do have the employee anniversaries, and we have quite a lot, so I'll go through them all. We have Andrew McVicker with public service of five years, Matt Fries, public service of ten years, Officer Sean Williams with seventeen years, Ashley Marshall also with the Police Department, four years, our own Katie Carrico with Communication celebrates her one year, and she's still here. Keith Duncan with the Police Department of fifteen years, Chris Unrow with the Police Department of twenty-three years, Jeff Vought in Engineering of one year, Tony Nuss in Parks for one year, Eric Conley with the Golf Department for four years, Josh Kirschbaum with Parks, twenty-one years, Ursula Kraus-Carry for Public Service was four years, Russell Mann with Golf is six years, Timothy Lammer with Police is twenty-three years, Kaylee Burnt with the Police is two years, Dylan Zimmerman with the Police is also two years, Alex Harris with Public Service, eight years, Travis Houston, Public Service, eight years, Dawson Randolph, Golf, five years, Phil Westlier, Police, twenty-nine years, Don Hutton, Planning and Development, one year, Alex Flick, Golf, four years, Roy Stafford, Golf, eight years, and Gregory Stahler, Golf, seven years. So, thank you so much to all of our employees. March seems to be a big year for anniversaries. Hopefully, it brings us some good luck and some better weather than we had with that snow on Friday, but otherwise, that is it for me, so thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, well, first, it's good to be back, and thank you for taking over during my absence, but it was much appreciated, and my wife and I had a great time on vacation. There's a lot coming up, there's a lot been going on. Oh, whoa, who put that thing up there? Anyway, this is, again, Katie's work, and Katie has put this for the social media, some of the locations I'm going to be at upcoming. Tuesday, tomorrow, I'll be at Reza's, then at Harbor Chase Thursday, I see, the 24th, Panera Bread Wednesday, the 30th, but in between there, I'm going to be at the Senior Center on the 18th. And we may, depending on how things go, we may do a couple more before the election, but please get the word out that we're not going to be a sales pitch, we're not doing anything other than being present for people to ask questions and answer them. I mean, it's not sit there, so please come out. If you've got five minutes, if you've got a half hour, whatever it is, just come out and bring your question with you if you have one. We're going to try to explain to the best of our knowledge what's going on. So, Charles, I would love it if you would attend with me at the Senior Center.
Well, I'll be there.
That's the, that's 10:30 on the 18th.
Yep, I'll be there.
And the other three, if there's anyone that would like to attend, join me, you're more than welcome. We don't want to make a crowd out of it, so if there's anybody that just wants to do one of them, please let me know, and please come out. Katie's going to be there to, to, I'm not going to suggest what it might be, but she's probably going to try to keep me from going astray, but... There you go. That'll be fun. But I'm looking forward to it, and, you know, we encourage everybody to get out and get educated as best they can on this issue. Let's see, we have the, you've all read about the opioid settlements, and that the state has divided things up into different committees, or whatever you want to call those. But anyway, Green County is one of seven in a particular group. Commissioner Gould is trying to put together a team in Green County. He's had some examples of what some of the other counties have done. Some are mayors, some are police chiefs, some are administrators, but I, my thought was that I was hoping that our chief would be responsible for that, because most of the opioid monies affect the Police Department. Well, the chief has graciously said that he would prefer that his, one of his captains be appointed to that position, is Captain Sumner, and so that decision will be made here before too long, but if any of you have any thoughts or comments on that, please get with myself or with Pete, and we'll see where we go from there. And it's not a hundred percent limited to just us putting one on, but for sure, I wanted the Police Department represented on that. Let's see. The VFW, it was, it's always great to see the youth and the effort they go to at the VFW to demonstrate their patriotism, and it's, it was fun. So, thank you, guys, for joining me. Boys Swim Team. I think most everybody knows that the Boys Swim Team came in first in Division One, and we are going to have the privilege of having them here, I believe on April 25th, is that correct? And so, we are having the Road Department create our signs, and, you know, it, these signs are getting, there's getting, there'll be a lot of them, you know, but it's always a pleasure to see again the kids. What else did I have? I think that's just about it. We do have, I know several of you are going to go to a scout meeting coming up. I think Don and Councilmember Adams, Councilmember Garcia, and Councilmember Curran were wanting to go to that scout meeting. So, I think that's, I don't know how many members are in that troop, but I didn't want it to be too overbearing to where we had more people there than the troop, so I know you all will do a fantastic job of answering their questions. Well, again, oh, the training. We did Mayor's Managers last week, and one of your trainers, I guess, might have been Mayor Bill Duncan from Oakwood. Well, he didn't say that he was a trainer when I saw him Wednesday, and he just said, I saw, and he complimented, he says, you have a very good council, he says, he complimented the fact that you were all there. And so, I says, well, Mayor, I says, how, he's been mayor for like twenty years or whatever it is. I says, is it taking you this long to go attend one of these classes? But anyway, we have fun at the Mayor's Managers, but I just wanted to pass along Mayor Duncan's comment that he enjoyed your company at the training. So, with that, I will let it go, and we will turn it over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to, Vice Mayor Garcia brought this up, so I just want to congratulate staff. This is the MVRPC, there was an email I sent to staff, or to council just earlier this afternoon after I got the award letter. So, basically, you're looking at about $3.4 million in grants, and then, which will require the city to have about $2.2 million in match money. So, you're talking, you know, five point, about $5.6 million in total, total funding, which equates to, I mean, where else can you get, you pay, somebody gives you sixty percent and you pay forty percent. I don't know any better place. I think all of us would trade money if they would give us sixty, we'd give them forty. So, congratulations, thank you to staff, the engineering staff, Mr. Mormon and his staff. If you recall, when we, council approved applying for these, that we said it's not necessarily what's most needed, but it is what's best possibility of getting the grant funds, and I think this was five out of six or so. We only got one grant that didn't, didn't get money, maybe next time, a Kemp Road project. So, congratulations to staff, job well done, Mr. Mormon. Moving on to Beaver Creek Police Department, this is something we've, first time we're doing it, Miami Valley Crime Prevention Association is bringing to Beaver Creek its first four-week Crime Prevention Academy, and academy is free and will include the history of community policing, crime prevention, along with the topics you see there, a little bit to go into that, but it's over a, several day events, Thursday, April 7th, 14th, 28th, six to nine, then a Saturday, April 23rd, at 9:00 a.m. to noon, and being held at Laffino Plaza, that's a good location to have such things. But to register, if you're interested in this, this is a Crime Prevention Academy, so this is not the Police Academy. It's a little different, okay, different focus. Police Academy, we will have one of those, Lord willing, this year, COVID something doesn't drastically happen, but we will have that later this year, but a Crime Prevention Academy. To register, visit bevercreekohio.gov/crimeprevention to sign up for that while there's room. I'm sure this is probably going to fill up rather quickly, but good information to be provided. Registration for the parks, this starts tomorrow for the summer camp, opens tomorrow, March 15th. The division's offering eight weeks of consecutive camp, beginning June 6th through the end of July, so you need to sign up beginning tomorrow. The camp will be held at Fairbrook Elementary School, Monday through Friday, 9:30 to 3:30 p.m., extended hours available in the morning and afternoon. Campers will explore outdoors, participate in variety of games and activities, create crafts, play sports, and meet new friends. Each work week, each week will have a different theme, including Pirate Week, Animal Kingdom, Under the Sea, and more, and this is the exciting part, field trips are back each week. So, because of COVID, you know, we had to cancel, you know, because of transportation and being next to one another, but field trips are back, and to register, visit bevercreekohio.myrec.com. Again, registration begins tomorrow, and I imagine spots will go fast. And I can't express enough about seasonal hiring, but we are still in need, again, for golf and for our maintenance, for our Parks Division. It's anywhere from helping us mow and keep, maintain areas, to working at the golf course, to, again, public service parks, all of them. We usually hire somewhere around eighty seasonals to operate on a usual basis, and I know our numbers are not coming in like we would hope they do. We are competitive wage, so please, if there's any interest, don't be indoors and air-conditioned, get out to the great, the great unknown, right, the great weather, and these jobs will definitely keep you outside and keep you moving versus, you know, some other jobs that may just be indoors all summer and you'll never see daylight. So, come see daylight with the parks and public service and golf club, and have a little fun while you're at it. So, visit bevercreekohio.gov, and you'll see the employment, and click on that and get applying for that before it's too late. That's all I have tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm going to back up, if counsel doesn't mind, just a second, add two things. The groundbreaking, we have a groundbreaking Wednesday evening at Wardinger Park for the reconstruction of the Zimmer Barn, so please come out and join us for that. And lastly, congratulations to Wright State Basketball, and we wish them well in their game Wednesday night, so, thank you. All right, citizen comment, is there anyone here tonight that would like to address council on any issue, any issue whatsoever? Seeing none, we will close Citizen Comment section, and may I have a motion for executive session?
I move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the Purpose of Consideration of the Employment of a Public Employee.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Yes.
Councilmember Bales.
Yes.
Councilmember Curran.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Adams.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Curran.
Yes. There was, there will be no decisions that come from this executive session, so the televised portion of this meeting will end, and so we are now in executive session. Thank you very much.